Yes.
To welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Gail Choate, Acting Director of Planning and the planner is assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting in early April at a date to be determined. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners and their Executive Meeting Agenda Packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. The petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then members of the public will be able to speak. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. Please note that you may only speak one time. To indicate you which to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed five minutes rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a survey will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor or in opposition or with concern regarding tonight's petition. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, the first petition tonight would be PC 06-21, New Unusual Subdistrict of the Metropolitan Zoo.
Good evening. This is Mel Wilson with the Planning Department. This is the only hearing we have tonight for the zoo petition. It's a request for a change in zoning from R3, FPR3, and R1 Residence Districts, as well as the C8 Planned Commercial District to PS Park and Scenic and the Floodplain Park and Scenic District for a 422-acre site located in the northwest quadrant of Larimer Road and Columbia Bottom Road, south of Strothman Road, and east of Spanish Pond Road. So you can see it's located in far north county in the Spanish Lake community. On the right side, the green is the Spanish Lake Census designated area. And outlined in red is the site. It's made up of three parcels. As many of you may be aware, the site was most currently developed with a golf course and sort of recreation facilities for the Plumber and Pipe Fitters Union. West of the site here, west of the site here is Spanish Lake Park. There are some residences abutting the site. To the south is the Vista Ridge subdivision. And to the north, there are some larger lot, single-family residences. And then to the east are the Columbia Bottom, is the Columbia Bottoms Conservation Area. I'm going to show some photos of the site. Unfortunately, the winter weather did throw a row into our site visits. So the photos you're going to see are from Google Street View and from the petitioner. So here we're looking sort of northwest at the entrance to the site off Larimer Road. You can see in the bottom left, the sort of key, the yellow arrow will show which way we're looking. Turning around, looking across Larimer Road at some residences on the other side. And then an aerial image sort of showing the entrance. And you can see on the left side here, these are the homes in the Vista Point subdivision I mentioned that abuts the site. So now we're going to sort of go around the perimeter of the site in a counterclockwise motion. So this is the intersection of Riverview Drive coming to the city of St. Louis, where it intersects with Larimer Road. A little bit further north, we're looking back south. This is where the entrance to the Columbia Bot, one of the entrances to the Columbia Bottom Conservation Area. You'll see the perimeter of the site is pretty wooded. This is looking west. You can see a structure on the Columbia Bottoms Conservation Area site. Looking south, behind me are some residences. And this is the shared property line with one of the residential, residentially zoned lots in the northern part of the site. This is looking south at Spanish Pond Road, looking across Strothman Road. So this wooded area on the right side is this sort of pointed part of the northwestern parcel. Looking southwest, you can see some of the residences that are along Spanish Pond Road. This is looking east at the shared property line with Spanish Lake Park. So the, to the right is Spanish Lake Park and to the left is the subject site. This is in, on Vista Point Drive, looking north. So behind these homes is the subject site. Here's a photo from the interior of the site showing some of the existing lakes. And then an aerial image that shows some of the existing structures and parking on the site. And you'll see outlined in red are some of the buildings that are a bit closer to Columbia Bottom Road over here. So you can see in the distance, the river, we're looking sort of south-southeast. So now we'll hear from the petitioner. Joel, I will make you the presenter. You should be able to share your screen now.
Got it. Thank you, everyone. Just give me a moment to pull it up. I appreciate the opportunity to share our presentation on our plans for Wild Care Park. Can someone give me a thumbs up that you can see the screen?
I can see it.
We can see it.
Thank you very much. All right. So again, thank you for your time this evening, those of you who have called in. We appreciate this opportunity to present where Wild Care Park is located geographically, what we plan to do, and how we use the property. As you saw, this is where Wild Care Park is. It is about 15 miles due north of the St. Louis Zoo near the confluence. Wild Care Park will have two functions. It will be a conservation organization engaged in the research and breeding of endangered species through the Conservation and Animal Science Center, as well as have a phenomenal guest experience to connect people with animals and nature. As you mentioned, the property has a lot of natural assets. There's wooded areas, lakes, green grassy areas with and without trees, some rolling hills, and even a small wetland. Other property features noted are existing buildings and parking lots. There are a number of easements with, which run through the property, as well as karst geography under a segment of the property. Both the easements and the karst geography limit our ability in terms of heavy structures on those areas. So now I'm going to get into the proposed site plan. This is an overview of the site plan. All of the property features I mentioned, as well as USDA and Association of Zoo and Aquarium Regulations and Standards guide our site plan. The next slides, we're going to go through this in a little more detail, starting with the Conservation and Animal Science Center, which is the dark green that you see on the map, as well as a little bit of the brown areas, which are support centers. And the Conservation and Animal Science Center encompasses the dark green, as well as a little bit of the brown for that. And Cam, Family Conservation and Animal Science Center will host and be devoted to three categories of animals. This side of the property will not be open to the public. On this side of the property, we will have ungulates, animals like antelope. We will have amphibians and reptiles, as well as birds. All the species will have current or potential recovery programs will be endangered. And because of that, we will have a modular design to our barns, as well as, and pastures, as well as privacy, so that we can, the animals can breed and we can prepare them for return to the wild. The following slides will show you the list of animals that are under consideration. Here are the ungulates. On this slide, they're color-coded to their level of endangerment. An asterisk note, the current or potential recovery program. And then the pluses note a connection to the St. Louis Zoo Wild Care Institute Field Conservation Program. So these are the ungulates. You see the same coding for the reptiles and amphibians, which will be housed in their separate habitats, as well as birds. Now we're going to get into the proposed guest experience for Wild Care Park. You will see here, there are actually, the guest experiences are noted by the gray areas, the two lighter shades of green, the kind of yellow and the purple areas. So we're going to start with the dark green to the north and work our way down and around. And in the dark green area and that lighter green area, those are safari pastures where guests will ride through those safari pastures in a zoo vehicle. So. The North Safari Pasture Experience will have the star animal of rhinos and some of their friends. Here's an example of some of their friends with different colors and shapes and body sizes. The South Safari Experience will have the star animal of giraffes, which everyone loves, with an opportunity for up-close experiences, as well as some of their friends. Now we're going to look at some of the other guest experience areas, starting with the core guest experience area. The core guest area here, as you see, encompasses the large parking lot, as well as the existing auditorium building. There we will do, and use the adjacent land to do an experience that combines the Best of Natural History Museum, Science Centers, and zoos. We will also. Existing clubhouse with its wonderful 360-degree views into an event center where meetings and weddings and other corporate events can happen. And those, that event center will have views into the giraffe and friends pasture. The other guest experience we are going to look at is the glamping zone. Glamping stands for glamorous camping. And this will allow us to do an overnight safari program that will be unique fun, as well as educational. This is some images of glamping. Those structures will look out across the lake into the giraffe and friends pasture. Then this last zone here is the Nature Adventure Zone. What we will do is leverage that current wooded area that has some karst geology on it. There won't be zoo animals, but we'll look to provide our guests with the following types of experiences. Boardwalks, hiking trails, some of them high up, some of them down low on the ground. Certainly providing an opportunity for nature play and allowing kids and families to reconnect, to play in the dirt, to build forts, things now that kids nowadays don't necessarily get a chance to do, but being able to do it in a safe environment. We're also looking at aerial adventures in terms of ropes courses, zip lines, and other abilities to get folks up in the air to see the natural vistas that exist around the property. And then we also want to get them down low, get them a different perspective, get them on the water through kayaking, where they can get a hoof view of some of the animals. So the St. Louis Zoo Wild Care Park, this represents the future of zoos. It is the first of its kind. It's very unique in that it's, is very close to a metropolitan area in that it combines the conservation, breeding, and guest experience into conservation action for the benefit of wildlife. We anticipate and expect this project to be transformational for North County, in that we will invest for the employment and we will need a new staff. We will also be investing dollars into its construction, which will have a positive economic impact. As we draw guests to this particular park, this portion of the park, we hope that there will be economic development with nearby restaurants, lodging, and retail, all benefiting from the increase in visitors, both directly and indirectly. And then again, we, part of our mission is education, and we seek to provide nature experiences and education programs for the entire region by leveraging the safari experience and the nature play area for our guests. You may be wondering what our timeline is. In 2021, we will continue biodiversity studies that have begun. We are now currently seeking zoning. We will look to put in a perimeter fence, an initial animal pasture, so that we can do it at a smaller scale to make sure that we absolutely get it right. And then we've also begun piloting education programs. We were supposed to do more of those last year, but COVID, like everything else, impacted that rollout, and we will continue doing those programs, hopefully in a larger scale in 2021. And then 2022 through 2026, we'll continue the biodiversity studies and have a fair amount of construction to create Wild Care Park. We're estimating a current public opening as early as 2026. So currently in the works, like I mentioned, we've been doing biodiversity studies of the native wildlife. We want to understand who's using the property, how they're using the property, so that we can maintain that and enhance native wildlife on the property. We are looking at a perimeter fence design that meets those USDA and Association of Zoo and Aquarium standards that is also presentable from the public roads. And we are working with CBB on a traffic study. We heard very early on the community concern about traffic. And so with that perimeter fence, we have also creating an interior perimeter role to pull our zoo operation traffic off of the public pathway. And then looking at those traffic studies to figure out how we can quickly and effectively get guests into our existing parking lots and deal with the staff and guest flow from that perspective. We will also do a sustainability review, as we do with the St. Louis Zoo, to ensure that we are good stewards of the natural resources. And all of that will then culminate in a final master site plan for Wild Care Park. So again, we are creating a conservation organization that is engaged in research and breeding of endangered species on the Conservation and Animal Science Center side, which is not public, as well as creating this public amazing guest experience that will create, connect people with animals and nature. So thank you again, Commission, for allowing us to present and hearing our presentation for tonight.
Okay, we appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a couple. This is Bill Ballard. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
The first one, will any additional building be incorporated on the grounds? Or have you gotten that for yet?
Any, let me make sure I understood you. Are there any additional buildings to be incorporated on the grounds?
Yes.
Yes, at this point, we know we will need some additional buildings, particularly those associated with housing our animals.
Okay.
The details of that are forthcoming.
Okay. And the next one is, how do you propose to account, monitor all your species to make sure they didn't get into the community? Then if they, do you have a plan for notifying the residents in the area if some of them did escape?
So that is a great question. I do have a lot of St. Louis Zoo team on the call here. Certainly, we've been great at the St. Louis Zoo in keeping our animals in. And in addition to the perimeter fence, the different habitats will have habitat fencing to help keep the animals where they should be. It is part of the Animal Division staff job to account for animals on a daily basis, so that we know where they are. And I will, Martha Stewart, Martha Fisher, who is our general curator, to jump in if I did not cover something.
I believe you covered. For containment of, that we're talking about having at Wild Care Park. We see the standards for containment for the animals, so no worries.
And we are currently, as a, as a part of our communication with our nearest neighbors, have asked neighbors if they would like to be a part of an email list, to submit their email information. And you can leverage that moving forward. But I doubt if there will be any issues. And it looks like Dr. Bonner is on the screen, who wants to add.
Just to add that in the last, a little over a century, we haven't had anything get beyond the perimeter fence, and that's really good, because we haven't had the perimeter fence for that entire time. So I think with regard to ungulates, we're really not concerned. And we don't have any top carnivores in that site. So I really don't think there's a consideration there, but it's a wonderful question. Thank you so much for asking it.
Okay, and then one more. Are these existing animals that you already have, or are you getting additional ones?
Martha, you want to answer that one?
I can certainly, yes. So the answer is yes. It's a little bit of both. So we will be bringing some of the animals from our current collection of the St. Louis Zoo, and they'll be moving houses up to North County, if you will. And then we will also be bringing animals in from other zoos to come into the new Wild Care Park.
So as I understand it, the people will come in their car, and then if they want to go on the safari, the North Safari, they have to get into one of your vehicles, and then you guys will drive them through that park. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for your questions.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Wayne, this is Lou Cunningham. I have a question. I'd like to know, what is the number of staff do you anticipate at this facility?
Another great question. When we went into this, we were estimating about 100 or so staff people. As the plans develop and get refined, that number will also be refined.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone?
This is additional staffing over beyond what you currently have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This is Bill State.
Yeah, Bill.
I was curious as to whether or not the plans that, at this facility would be operated year-round.
That is another great question. Right now, we are planning to be closed to the general public. So November, December, January, February, largely due to weather.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Have you decided on a price? What would something like that cost? Have you gotten that for, for someone to come in and do something like that? Take a journey through there.
We don't, we don't have a cost for it yet. We're exploring what the pricing structure could be. We did a preliminary study a few years ago, and now that we have, we're refining our ideas on what the Wild Care Park is, then we will then have to go back and look at that study to see if it's still valid. But again, county residents will have a safari experience, along with their zoo museum, with the zoo museum and wild, the nature adventure area as, as part of their free entry.
Okay, anyone else? I've got a quick question. Is this being done anywhere else in the country?
There are a few examples of places that are similar to this. There is one park associated with Columbus Zoo. There is another park that is associated with Henry, Henry Dorley Zoo. But the difference is that those parks are at least an hour or so far out from the city core. So this is very unique in terms of the size and the proximity to the urban core and the St. Louis Zoo.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, anyone else? Seeing none, Melissa, you want to see who would like to speak?
Sure. So we'll start with Kathy Blanowski. Kathy, you're unmuted to give your comment.
Okay, thank you. I grew up in North County of St. Louis, and I'm visiting friends and relatives this weekend. And I was shocked, shocked to see today acres of trees and existing wildlife habitat cut down, destroyed forever, with no, no regard for that wildlife habitat, for the existing character of the landscape, the natural communities, and the neighborhood. I understand that the workmen today told me you're clearing trees to make a path for a perimeter road to protect your introduced exotic animals. I don't think, I think the zoo's lying. You're lying when you say you're about conservation. You don't care about the native wildlife in your own backyard, in our own North County. If you cared about conservation, you'd be investing in the habitat protection in the countries of origin of these animals that you want to bring in. And I, I'm very upset that you've already chopped down acres of large trees, wildlife habitat. It's, I don't even understand why you're having this meeting tonight, when you've already chopped down acres of trees. The only, what I would like to see is that you would invest in supporting, do some kind of remediation for the damage that you've done, support MDC in recovering and establishing wildlife habitat in the area to support what you've destroyed. And that's what I, I'm, I'm shocked. I'm, I'm very disappointed that an establishment like the St. Louis Zoo would do something like this.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
Next will be, sorry, our list got long here. Next will be Kathy Jaeger. Kathy, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I live, we live on Spanish Pond directly across from what will be the rear of the zoo, like the 40 acres. And I mean, we're thrilled about the whole thing. And, you know, I realize there's a lot of people upset about the trees being cleared. But the fact is, you, there's 425 acres. Conservation area is like 4,000. Behind us is like another 450. So you're not driving wildlife out into the streets. And I realize you have to clear and have open fields and pastures for your animals. I support the zoo. I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood, as far as housing and businesses and just a better name for Spanish Lake than we've had in the past. So I support your, your endeavor, and I'm looking very forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Next will be Linda Harris. Linda?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead with your comment.
Okay. I live on Vista Ridge, which, the subdivision, which is directly on the other side of the fence. I have two questions. You're changing the zone, the zoning for the zoo area from R1 to R3. How does that affect me on Vista Ridge? That's one question. The other question is the construction of the new fence. Is it going to follow the lines of the existing fence? Or is it going to encroach upon? Or is it going to encroach upon the subdivision where I live? Because we're directly behind the zoo, the wildlife zoo.
Okay, well, we'll ask them to address that on rebuttal.
Okay, next will be Loree Rothmiller. Loree?
I was wondering, once the, the whole thing about the zoning, how would that affect us? Once it is, if you, with it being rezoned, how would that affect the homeowners and the individuals in the residential area?
Okay.
Well, I just want to clarify that there, the petition is for a change in zoning from the residential districts to PS Park and Scenic.
Okay, and I understand that. So ultimately, once it is rezoned, I believe that if the parks in the Scenic District or the flood plain or whatever it is, they can ultimately change. And that would affect the homeowners if they wanted to expand in our area. So how would that affect us as homeowners once it's rezoned?
Maybe I could try to address that. This is Gail Shodt, I'm the Acting Director of the Planning Department. They're only requesting to rezone the property that they have under control. They can't come and request property that they don't own. As, as you, you could not seek to rezone your neighbor's property. You have to have a vested interest either owning the property or having it under contract. A new public area would be required to have any additional rezonings occur. They are just asking their 400 acres to, to go to the Park and Scenic zoning district, which is a zoning category that does allow parks and zoos and that type of activity. It doesn't allow housing. It doesn't allow, you know, office commercial uses, that type of thing. It is purely for, for parks and, and similar type uses. So that zoning should not affect your residential zoning or your residential.
Does that help?
It does, it helps a lot, thank you.
Sure, sure. Okay, next will be Jim and Karen. The last name's getting cut off. Jim and Karen?
Yes.
Go ahead with your comment.
Oh, yeah.
Karen? Jim and Karen Barbaglia?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Oh, now you're unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, we have a question along the, one of the maintenance areas along Spanish Pond Road designated, that designated brown. What is that going to be used for? Is that going to be used for maintenance buildings? Or is that going to be used for additional parking or traffic? Or is that going to have a road? What, what is that going to be used for?
Okay, well, we'll address that when they do rebuttal.
Okay, next will be John Schick. And as a reminder, if you've spoken, you can unclick your hand to lower your hand. John Schick? Mr. Schick, are you there?
Yes, can you hear?
Yes, you can go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a specific map that showed the exact flood plain that you're proposing from changing to flood plain to flood plain?
It, it's a very tiny portion on the property up in the northwest, I believe. Mel, do you have a better map showing the flood plain area?
I think I turned the flood plain layer off.
It is up in the, it is up in the northwest area. Gail's correct.
Northeast, excuse me, northeast. Yeah, I think it's where Stradman intersects Columbia Bottom Road, that area. Yeah, it's sort of this northeastern area. Okay, let me see if there's anyone else.
Did John have a question about that specific area or just where it was?
John, was that your whole comment?
Yeah, I was just curious. I know they did the surveying, and, and that was the answer. So I just wanted to see more specifically on a map, and it looks like that I got it outlined there. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next will be Earl Childress. Earl?
Yes, as a resident of North County, we have a high population of minorities. And I was just curious about the project. Is there any minority or women contractors involved in the project? And if so, do you know what the statistics are? And then also want to know what was the estimated economic impact will this have on the region?
Okay, we'll ask them to address that at the end.
Next is Sharon Mitchell. Sharon?
Yes, I'm trying to find out, will you be providing transportation from one zoo to the other zoo? And if so, will there be a cost involved?
Okay, we'll ask them to respond on that.
Okay, let me just, I don't see anyone else. If you haven't spoken and would like to, please click the raise hand button next to your name. I think, I think that's everyone.
That's everyone, okay. If we can, Doctor, if you could respond to some of the comments? Is she available?
Yeah, sorry, I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
So let me start by addressing the, the perimeter fence. The perimeter fence, actually, we started the work on the clearing for the perimeter fence as well as the internal road. We sent letters to our nearest neighbors informing them that the work was coming. And part of the reason why we are doing this in actually two steps is to be responsive to the native bats, which use trees to roost. So native bats are not around, so we will not impact their roosting. We're also doing it at a time when migratory birds are not back. So we're trying to minimize our wildlife impact that the clearing will actually have. The clearing is one step of a multi-step process for the perimeter fence and the perimeter road. And it is fully our intention to not only put in the fence, but also do additional plantings to help of native plants so that we can begin to do some stewardship and restoration work, not only around the perimeter site, but on the property in general, because there is a fair amount of invasive plant species on the property. So again, this is one step. It is not the, the end all. It is not what the property will look like from any of the roads by the time that we're finished. We are working through those designs now, but we don't have them that we can share. But we do ask that, in fact, you trust that we will. We did fell the trees. We will make the fence line appropriate for viewing from the property, from the homeowner's properties, as well as the finished product will be in support of native wildlife. And that's why it was so important to start the biodiversity studies as well as continue them throughout this entire process. I believe there was another question about the maintenance, maintenance area that is along Spanish Pond Road. Right now, at the zoo, we do have those similar functions that are there. We are looking, we will have a number of vehicles. We will have a couple of shops. We will have some greenhouses that we are currently looking at that particular area for. That area is larger than the space that we think we may currently need. But we have heard concerns about the location of the space and what will be on it, and we're taking those into consideration as we plan moving forward. And the question, there was also a question about minority and women-owned business participation in the project moving forward. We do have a supplier development program. We are actively looking to engage minority and women-owned businesses as the projects move forward. Thus far, the perimeter fence clearing company is a WBE from North County. So we, moving forward, will be doing outreach to ensure that we are making sure that those minority and women-owned businesses know about the opportunities with Wild Care Park through its construction and development. And we will be tracking and maintaining those efforts. And that will then position us nicely to do an economic impact report, which we do not have to date. And then I believe that there was another question about transportation between the two parks. We are not sure about that at this time. We have begun conversations with the Transportation Agency to look at what our options are in terms of public transportation and how to connect this parcel and this property with transportation centers, et cetera, in the area. But we have not determined whether or not we will be transport, using some sort of transportation between both campuses at this time. And anyone from the zoo team, did I get anything or miss anything?
This is David McGuire with the zoo staff. There was a question about whether the perimeter fence line will follow the property line. And yes, in general, it does follow the property line. It will not be on the property line. Generally, it's inset towards the Wild Care Park property so that we have some ability to get around the outside to do fence maintenance. And generally speaking, on, in most places, we'll be planting a green buffer to soften the look of the fence from the outside roads.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone have any comments?
Wayne, we do have one more speaker, the councilwoman.
Sure.
Councilwoman Webb?
Everyone, I apologize for not being able to share my video, but I want to say thank you to the zoo and all of the members of, on the zoo team and all that they've done to ensure that our community is well-informed and prepared for this great economic change and community. Excuse my words for some, but it is going to revolutionize what's going on here in North County. It's not even just looking at creating a new generation of those who would be enthusiasts about veterinarian and other scientists related to the zoo, but it's also going to drive some economic development changes in our community. Beyond that, they are focused on making sure that they provide vocational training programs for our youth. So I think that the zoo, Dr. Joel and all of the team have been phenomenal to ensure that we don't just look at this as a transactional activity going on in North County, but is a true economic development, community development for North County. So I'm excited. I've got to actually tour the facilities about two or three weeks ago and was thoroughly impressed. I am also mindful that they recognize some of the challenges, and they're actively engaging the community and keeping us informed about what's going on and how they are approaching those challenges. So again, I commend Ms. Dr. Joel and her team and staff. And I thank you, Planning Commission, for having us actually bring this forward to the community today.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Commissioners, anyone? Seeing none? Mel, you want to take account of those in favor?
As you leave the meeting, when you close out of the WebEx meeting, a poll, a short survey will pop up that asks you if you're in favor and opposition, or if you have concerns regarding the request. If you called in on your phone for audio, it obviously won't pop up for you, but you can email additional comments to planning@stluisco.com.
And that concludes this hearing. We appreciate everyone.